Right, and it's very busy.
Janet couldn't make it.
Right.
Oh, she couldn't?
Well, she prefers not to because she works.
You're live.
Okay, all right, I hear I call the meeting to order for the Rockport Select Board on October 28th, and there are four of us present constituting a quorum. Unfortunately Denise is stuck in, she was trying to get home from Denver and having some travel difficulties. So, the first item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report, Bill.
Pleased to announce that with the efforts of Safety Training Coordinator Diane Hamilton, the town received a safety grant that will fund two-thirds of the cost of a full set of turnout gear for the fire department, the amount of $1,342.10.
Thank you Diane.
The C Street Pump Station project is moving forward with an upgrade to the existing controls, which includes engineering, construction, administration, and construction with Woodard and Kern. Wilcox Electric is the contractor. This is part of our capital improvement program to improve that, the controls there from the early 1990s when that was originally installed, so that'll help with any potential issues there. The wastewater line extension along Route 1, Wood and Kern, and Kern has been trying to work with landowners to locate a second pump station along Route 1, near Roxmont Road. After failed negotiation with two property owners, a solution was found, a second pump station will be located near the Plant Unlimited property and does not require acquisition of an easement in order to place the pump station, so it'll be in the right of way, which obviously solves a bunch of hurdles there. It also allows the elimination of about 1,000 feet of gravity sewer line in the area between Down East Magazine and Plant Unlimited, which saves an additional $100,000 in construction costs.
That's great.
Which is good. Woodard and Kern is recommending that the project be put out to bid in the spring instead of this fall, as obviously we're late now, and they also believe that the bid cost would be higher this fall than they would be in the spring.
Bill, do you need any kind of motion on that, or?
Nope, we don't.
Okay, great.
At the last select board meeting, a question was brought up about the Pascal Avenue Bridge, so I checked with DOT about when that bridge is slated for replacement. The information that I've written in the manager's report is that it would be, it's included as a medium priority and scheduled to be replaced in 2022. That's not accurate, I got further information today that said that the engineering will be started in 2022, which may could be another year or two after that when it actually is constructed. As you all, I think, know, a resident had raised concerns about the crosswalks on Central Street and Union Street not being repainted. If you recall, MDOT directed the town to eliminate four sidewalks, two near the post office, and then two down near Nine of Junes, and to replace them with one further up on Central Street, and then we added one on Summer Street over to the post office in order to stay consistent with MDOT guidelines with crosswalks, where they ideally want at least 400 feet in between crosswalks, and they obviously want them to be landing, safe landing zones on each side that are ADA compliant as well. So I did ask Public Works to try to cover up what is left of the white paint from those that wasn't painted with black, so that at least it's apparent that they're not active crosswalks. I think it's important to note that since we are in compliance with those policies, MDOT's crosswalk policies, that did help with them providing funding for the intersection improvements at Lime Rock, Central, Union. As you know, the requests for qualifications for the RES redevelopment were due middle of October. We received one submittal, and the next step is for the RES redevelopment committee to meet and review the proposal and/or make recommendations to the select board as to what they expect that we should do moving forward.
Where, if I might, where was the proposal from? Who?
I don't, I don't remember, Mark. I can, I can.
Local?
It's local, yes. Yeah, it's a local developer. I don't remember the names, that's the only.
No, that's good, thanks.
Most likely that meeting, the first meeting of the committee, won't happen until probably the first of December, or after the first of December, just because of logistics of trying to get the committee members around the Thanksgiving holiday. The EMS Performance Review Committee did meet on October 17th at the town office. All four towns were well represented, we had two reps from Northeast Mobile Health Services. Essentially, the meeting consisted of a review of the last quarter's performance as a review of the previous year's performance, because the last meeting of that committee was back in April. One comment that I added was that the current performance of Northeast Mobile Health meets the contract requirements, as the current requirements in the contract are not very difficult to meet.
And I think also, you might, if my recollection is correct, the Outlying Air is Hope in Lincolnville, I think voiced a satisfaction with current services.
They certainly did, and obviously their call volume is significantly less. I think Hope said they had zero calls in, was it a month or a quarter? I don't remember which.
It was, it was a month, I think.
Yeah, yeah. As you know, the zoning board of appeals denied Mr. Earl's appeal of the library building permit at their meeting on October 17th. The appellant now has 45 days from that date to appeal the decision to court if they decide to. One other comment that I'll add that's not on your written report is that the, the town mailed out the information mailer on the infrastructure bond that went in the mail today.
Got it.
To the, I was gonna say you should be receiving it today, tomorrow, and so I think that's pretty timely with the vote coming up next week.
Yep. One thing, if I could flip back, Madam Chair, for a second, to the safety grant, is there any way yearly, I believe, or more often than not yearly, we get money back from main municipal based on our non-issues, no accidents, whatever, and they give us a little bit back. I mean, I remember one year it was $29,000, I think most recently it might have been $6,000. Is there a way that that money that's given back can be infused into future training, rather than rebudgeting more money that ultimately goes back into the black hole?
Yes, yeah. The board could develop, based on your charter, the board could create a reserve account, and you could designate whether it's for safety training or whatnot.
I mean, that's better, I think, in only 20%'s opinion, but rather than budgeting for certain things every year, we could tap into that, because we do.
We could use it for paving. It's a joke.
Well, can we earmark that for discussion in our budget?
No, I think, it's a good idea. I think it's just another way to help perhaps save a.
Earmark that as an issue for us to discuss?
Well, the question, I guess, is whether you want to discuss it in the budget process or whether you want to, because the board can create a reserve account based on what those dividend payments, and I believe that's what you're talking about, Mark, is the dividend payments that are returned to the town. We've already received one this year for, I don't remember the amount, but $3,600 or something like that.
But if that offsets training expenses for the town in any one particular day or six times during a year, then that.
Well, and you might want to designate it for, you know, other than just training, it could be, or safety equipment, safety.
Well, and that's, what prompted it was because of the turnout gear, the third of a gear was purchased through similar safety.
Right.
Improvements, and, you know, whether it's the highway or the police department or the town office, if a little could be sprinkled here and there to, to offset any budgetary things, that would be wonderful.
And we certainly could do that, and then if there's an instance when we do apply for a safety grant for something that might come up through, through the budget year that we haven't planned on purchasing, then we would have a grant match readily available in that reserve account that we could use should we get another grant that we weren't planning to apply for as well.
I think, Madam Chair, it's a great opportunity to explore that.
So, okay, Mark, good idea, so do, would, would it be appropriate to make a motion now, or would you want to prepare the wording for the reserve account, or?
Yeah, let me, let me prepare it, and I can bring it to the next.
Another agenda item?
Yep.
Thank you.
Is that okay with everybody?
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple. You know, on the, going back to the Pascal Avenue Bridge, I remember there was discussion a year ago, or whatever, that it was going to take so long for the state to do any repair or engineering work, apparently, with respect to that bridge, that we were asking that it be painted at some point.
I remember five years, yeah.
I remember the date, the five year, two last year. So, we had, we wanted to inquire whether or not we could get them to at least paint it so it didn't look so ugly.
I can certainly check with them.
Yeah, I just didn't want that to get lost in the process, because I don't know that it was ever asked or answered, so.
I think it was informally asked, and I think the informal answer was, you know, painting a bridge is a major production because of all the environmental, and the state just wasn't going to put the money into repainting a bridge that was going to be replaced.
Because that could be a third of the cost of the replacement.
Because you have to catch all the chips and everything instead of letting them fall, and.
But I'll, but I'll certainly ask the question to get the formal answer back, but I agree with you that that's most likely going to be the response.
Yep. The second thing, I do have a copy of this bid that we received for the RES development, and of course it's public information, Mark, and so it is, Rockport Crossing is the entity that submitted the bid. And there's a copy of it here that.
No, it's fine, I just, it wasn't in this, and I wasn't sure who.
Yep. The third, oh, the third and last thing that I had was, with respect to the zoning board of appeals, do, did they issue their, their written decision?
That has not been issued yet.
Okay, so when they do issue that, will, will you circulate that to the board?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay, anything else? All right. The next agenda item is public input on non-agenda items, so if the public has anything to say with respect to an item that's not on tonight's agenda, now's the time. Hearing none, we'll go on to amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments? Hearing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda, which includes the meeting minutes of October 15th, 2019.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second with some discussion. Well, just typos.
Okay, 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 second.
For Linda, I'll second. Linda, there are multiple places where it refers to the town manager, and manager is misspelled, M-A-N-G-E-R, so check that out, and I think Ben Blackmon's name, I think his last name is spelled with an O, Blackmon, not Blackman, so.
And Milwaukee is spelled wrong, as we discussed before. Okay. There's a first and second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Aye, ayes. All right, the next item on the agenda is an action item for appointment for the planning board, and Tom Laurent is here, and Tom is currently on the board of assessment review, and he is a plan, he's a, he's an alternate on the planning review board, correct? And this would be for a permit position, or regular position, I guess I should say, on the planning board, and we had a very strong recommendation from Joe Stranowski, the chair of the planning board, that I think he sent around via email to the board. Tom, would you like to add anything?
No, I think it speaks for itself, I'm glad to be a permanent member.
Could you come up here, I'm sorry, it's kind of traditional here. Yeah, just behind the podium.
They can't hear you well, they can't hear you well if you're not.
Right, I've been an alternate member for about a year. Previously, I was a resident of Camden, and I served on the zoning board there for quite a few years, so I have a certain amount of expertise, and I've enjoyed the opportunity to review applications to the town, and I've been appointed to actually sit with the board on a number of occasions, so I think it's important for town residents to take part in community governance, and I would like to continue that.
Great, and I applaud your suggest, your objective of making sure that planning board and code enforcement, make sure that conditions are met, when conditions are, you know, when the planning review board recommends or approves an item with conditions, that those conditions are in fact met, I know that, I mean, obviously like anything else, things can fall between the cracks, so that's good.
Right, that's not necessarily original with me. Previous board chairs and current board members have made the same observation, because we realize that the board does not have authorization to inspect properties after conditions have been put down.
Perfect timing, Mr. Stranowski.
Yes.
All right. Does the board have any questions, or, Joe, do you want to add anything, or?
Yeah, I'll just step off for one second.
Yeah, go ahead. Joe is the chair of the planning review.
Yes, good evening, Joe Stranowski, chairman of the planning board. Tom's been with us as an alternate for about a year now, and during that period of time, he's had a significant opportunity to be seated on the board due to conflicts and absences. Tom's pretty level-minded, pretty pragmatic, I think he does a good job looking through the ordinance, examining it to determine how things that are put before us fit with the land use ordinance, and so, as I did in the letter that I had sent to you, I recommend that we seat Tom as a full member.
Very good. I move that the board appoint Tom Laurent as a regular member of the planning board with a term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would say that moving to Rockport shows a great deal of common sense. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, 4-0. All right. The next action item is to act on the use of reserve account for public safety antenna project. Bill?
So this project comes to the board because the amount is above the $2,000 limit that I have available to approve. You may recall that during the windstorm in August, a leak developed in the roof of the public safety building. The cause of the leak basically was determined to be the weakening and shifting of the antenna mounts, and the fire chief requested bids from three companies to replace and update the antenna equipment. The town, we received two quotes for the antenna work. Yankee Communications is the lowest bidder at $3,453.2, and also the company that the fire chief would prefer to do the work. We did not receive a third bid, which is really not unusual with this type of work, as there are limited companies that do this type of work in Maine. Funding for the project will come from the radio reserve account, which currently has $13,750 available.
Is there a motion for purposes of discussion?
Yeah, I'll move the board approve purchasing a new communication antenna for the public safety building from Yankee Communications, in the amount of $3,453.2, with funding to come from the radio reserve account.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
This has needed to have been done for quite a while, though, if I recall, and it's always been put off for budgetary reasons. My question is, while this is being done, are there other roof needs that we may have to go back in a year or two to replace shingles or other types of things that maybe we could coordinate one with the other?
To my knowledge, no. We had two companies come in and inspect the mounts. What happens is the cables have loosened up over time, with the loosening of the cables when the antenna sways and the wind was pulling on the mounts. They're going to redo all of the mounts, reseal them with whatever material, goo, gunk, that they do, they're going to remount those. We've left the hole in the ceiling in the back room open so that they can get up and access it, the other two are accessible by the attic, so the shingles are still in good condition from both of the contractors I have on the department, they looked at it. The only other thing is obviously the trim, which is a whole different, is a line.
So, just to be clear about our terms, we're talking about replacing the antenna and the tower?
No, the tower's perfectly fine, it's the, I mean, Mark can attest, the antennas broke, I think the first, one of the antennas broke the very first year I was here, and they put this little wire one up in its place.
Okay.
And back to his point, every year the budget has been denied for the replacement of this, and we've gotten to the point where PD cannot hear some of the calls in certain areas, so it's now imperative that we get the newer, larger antennas that will broadcast over a further area back up. At the same time, they're going to redo the mounts, they're going to run an extra cable for future use of radios if we switched over to the dual band, so we're going to have that extra wire ready to go.
Okay.
Reclasping all of the clasps on the wires and tightening them back up, that will all be done as part of this.
Okay, so new antennas, feed lines, and rejuvenating the mounts.
Correct.
Will it be safe again to put decorations up?
The Christmas lights go up every year thanks to Camden Fire and their ladder truck.
Safer now, good.
Okay, anything else? Okay, there's a motion and second on the table, all in favor? Okay, 4-0. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jase.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to act on LED streetlights project. Bill?
So it has taken me a little while to get up to speed on this, but thankfully we're not behind all the other communities either, because it's taken them some time to get up to speed as well. So essentially, there are three items to discuss and decide upon tonight for the board, one being the color temperature of the light, which is 2,700 Kelvin versus 3,000, whether or not you want to replace the current decorative lights, which there are 149 decorative streetlights in the community, you'd like to replace those with new LED decorative streetlights, and then if you would like to have smart controls installed along with these new streetlights. As for the color temperature, Rockland and Camden both have chosen the 2,700K, and I recommend that we choose that as well. It will produce a similar light to what we have currently, obviously it's still brighter and more efficient. The higher temperature light produces a different colored light, which can lead to some complaints from residents, and there's also some issues, potential issues from residents about, and I don't even know what the correct terms, but anytime you have different wavelengths, there's potential issues with people and their thoughts and feelings about those different wavelengths.
Okay, so there's three issues, should we take these one at a time?
Yeah, I think we ought to take them one at a time.
Yes.
All right, just for clarification, the 2,700K is the yellow of the two persons?
Yes.
We had a presentation, what, six months ago or so, on this, so I'll take it, in order to promote discussion here, I'll move the board select the 2,700K color temp for the LED streetlights.
Second.
For discussion, I was sort of under the impression we could pick and choose so that the residential areas could have the 2,700, but the more commercial areas that, like the town office, public safety building, could go with the 3,000, is that not the case?
It's, it's recommended that you go with one temperature because of ease of purchasing, but also because from a resident's standpoint, you don't, you don't really want to, the real term doesn't, they recommend one color just because you're not changing throughout the town.
Yep.
Which is another reason why if you're driving from Rockland and then you've gone to Rockport and there's a different color, then into Camden, there's a different color.
Right, I think it might be kind of disconcerting not to do that, yep. Anything, any other discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor? 4-0, okay. Next item, Bill, a second issue?
Yes, so the decorative streetlights, if you see, you have a small map and a larger map in your packets that shows, legend that shows the decorative streetlights with a D, and the Cs are the Cobra headlights, then you do have some, we do have some floodlights also in town, which are designated by the, by the F, if you will. So there are 149 decorative streetlights in the community. They basically are, they're centered around villages, there's certainly quite a few in, in the downtown, the village area here, but they do emanate out along Main Street out to past the Goose River Golf Club.
Rockville.
Rockville, you have the different villages, West Rockport, you can see them, you can see them on the map.
And could I ask you a question about that? You have a picture of the light, the decorative light in here, and then you have a picture of the arm or the bracket?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that when we're talking about a decorative light, we're talking about both the light itself and that bracket?
Yes, yes, yeah. So you don't, yeah, so you do have a picture in the specs for the decorative light, the decorative pendant, and then you have a picture of it mounted on a steel pole, which I was obviously are mounted on a wooden pole, wooden utility pole, so they obviously look a little bit different when they're mounted.
And then the Cobra head ones, the picture of the Cobra head ones are also further back, which are quite utilitarian looking.
Yes, those are your standard streetlight that you'd see pretty much everywhere, is the Cobra head. You also have a breakdown of the difference in the cost between the Cobra heads and the decorative pendants, so there is a substantial difference in cost, as you can tell, if you did, if you did all of the 149 decorative, the cost just for those, 149, is 308,000, and the LED Cobra heads are 102,000, so there's a significant difference in price.
All right, if we could, I'd like to just run down through the full-up price, if we did, for example, 262 Cobra heads, how much?
Do we even have that number?
Yeah, I think you, was that the 100 and, 100 and?
Option two, I think, 102,000.
Well, that shows 149.
I'm sorry, did you say all Cobra heads?
If we did all Cobra heads.
Okay, yes, we do have that number, yes, yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking you said all.
To get a total of 262 streetlights in Rockport, if we did all Cobra heads, how much?
Isn't that option two? Oh, wait a minute.
I think, I think it's over here.
Oh, it's split.
I think, isn't it, isn't it right here on, on our separate sheet of paper?
You have it on the separate sheet of paper.
Okay, so on the separate one that you sent out?
218,508, is that right? I think that's the number.
Three quarters of the way down.
Oh, yeah, radio wave conversion option two to LED.
And that's all of them?
Right.
So for the 262 Cobra head, all right, and then if we did the split, where you have 149 decorative, and the other, the balance being whatever the number is?
200 and?
That's, that's the first one, I think.
Is that, I just want to verify, is that the first option?
That's.
Yeah, it's about, it's like 400,000.
436, 135, right.
All right, so how many, how many was that?
It's 149 decorative.
149 decorative and how many Cobra heads?
63.
96?
Yeah, 96 Cobra heads and 149 decorative, and three floodlights.
So the difference is 218,000 plus or minus?
Pretty much doubles.
So the cost to do the 149 as decorative versus Cobra head increases the cost of the project approximately 218,000.
Correct.
And then, of course, there's the option that's not priced out here, which would be to do less decorative than 149, right?
Right, you can do whatever the balance was.
That's correct, you could choose to do just the more in-between.
And I did ask, I did ask, Bill, sorry I didn't ask earlier, but this afternoon, late this afternoon, what Rockland and Camden have done since we had checked with them on the 2,700, you know, K, and they, and he confirmed that Rockland has some decorative, but it's down Main Street.
Yes, so, so both Camden and Rockland had previously installed decorative lights, decorative LED lights, essentially in their downtown areas. Rockland is limited just to their Main Street. They do have some that are around the Farnsworth Museum that the Farnsworth had put in and they actually own. They do have some that are around the Farnsworth Museum that the Farnsworth had put in, and they actually own. So Rockland is, is just on Main Street. Camden is in their downtown area, and in some of the streets that do emanate out from,
Like the commercial streets?
Yes, yep, exactly. So that's where they have their decorative streetlights.
So if we do have decorative, do we have to have a separate set of fix-it materials for those, the, the working mechanisms, would they be different than the non-decorative ones?
I guess I'm not sure what...
Yeah, the guts are different.
The guts are different.
Yeah, yeah, they are, they are.
All right, so we'd have to have another set of...
You'd have redundant, you'd have spares.
Yes.
Remind me again, the money for this is coming from?
It'll be a lease purchase, and then the, we'll, we'll determine the exact figures based on what we're saving from, from paying the lease for CMP, once the board decides what it is you want to do with the lights.
I think the, the original presentation was going from the 55,000 we're currently paying round numbers down to about, it's either 11 or 14,000, so there was a significant savings.
So if we said we were saving 40,000 a year, does that sound right?
You would say that's fair, that's fair.
All right, the, it, by going direct replacement of Cobra heads and decorative, it's extending the payback period over four years?
Versus, I think, two and a half or whatever the other?
Five years.
Yeah, it's certainly going to extend the payback period, there's no question.
So there's no return until, for five more years than it would be if it was just a standard Cobra head replacement?
Right.
But the life of the lights are, I mean, like fixtures are obviously longer than that, so.
Yeah, there's, well, and there's a 10-year warranty on, on the lights themselves.
So you're not paying, you're not paying more, you're still gonna, you're still gonna be saving then in the last five years, right?
Yes.
Or six years.
Right, but it would, it's just, five more years, you're not going to get a return on the project.
Right, it does take longer, yes, and which in turn means we'll most likely, you know, extend the lease purchase agreement that will, whatever that final number is, will extend it out a little bit longer too.
So if we decided to do away with the decorative and go with one particular light as recommended by the company or provided by the company, is there a mechanism or a place, I think we talked a little bit about putting those out to, to sell somewhere? You know, that somebody might want those 149 or...
The way, the way the agreement works with, with this contract is that the installer, when they remove the
Gets to have.
Current lights, uses those, and will recycle, obviously, there are components that have to be recycled of those, and then sell the rest for scrap, basically, is to help pay for the cost, because it actually costs to recycle the, the old lights.
So another question, I'll scratch the so part, the impact to the taxpayer, where does, what do we think it's going to be?
I, I don't have the numbers because...
Without the lease, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers at this point. Once, once the board makes the decision on the type of streetlight, then what the next step is for the Real Term Energy is to do an investment-grade audit, which will give us the actual real numbers, what we're saving from CMP's costs, and then we'll be able to project that out to see what the cost actually is.
I thought that the point here was that there was no cost to the taxpayer, because we're actually, we're actually saving money, and then based on whatever that, that differential is, you know, as we said, we either are paying four years or we're paying two and a half years, but there's no cost to the taxpayer.
And that's, and that's the goal, which is why the, the lease purchase agreement would be longer necessarily than, you know, so that we wouldn't have a cost to the taxpayer, so that the savings that we get would pay for the lease purchase. But I can't answer those questions until I know.
Yeah, yeah, but that's why I think we thought this was kind of a no-brainer project when it was presented to us, because it's not upping the cost to the taxpayer.
So, you know, my 20% went up to 25 tonight, and I would think that because of some of the things we have coming at us potentially in the future, we might go with a, a complete, do away with your decorative, basically, and go with one type, get your payback sooner, which will free up 40,000 extra dollars in two and a half years from now versus five. If that made any sense to anybody other than me.
Well, it'd be two and a half years versus...
Four.
Over four.
Right. And again, it's, it's, right, it's, it's six.
Oh, four more.
Right.
And it's, and you also, again, there's the other thought too, is that you can do fewer decorative lights, maybe have some in the village area, maybe you put, I don't know how, what the number is for that, I don't have that in front of me, I do have a list of them at, at the office that shows what streets have how many, but you can see where the preponderance of the decorative ones are. You did also have an email, the board did, from one, one resident on this discussion about the decorative versus the Cobra heads as well.
And he's out on, he's out on the golf course, right, and, and I was surprised to hear that out there, there was a decorative light. I mean, I thought that they were more confined to the downtown area, but clearly, they're not.
Right.
And, you know, I, I'm just going to say that my 25% is that I think that we would be, I think that residents would not like it if we went to these really rather ugly utilitarian-looking lights from what we currently have in the downtown area. You know, we're very focused on trying to keep our downtown area attractive and old, and, you know, we got bridges, we got, you know, we got all this, you know, we, all this time we've spent with the library and the brick buildings, and then you put in these ugly Cobra lights, I think we're just being, I, I think we're, I think it would be misguided for us to do that. So if the board were thinking about not replacing the 149, which I can certainly understand, being choosier about where we put them, I would certainly hope that we would maintain them in the downtown area.
What is the background on how, does anybody know what the background was on how these lights got decorative versus?
1995, Don Willard sold it to the board at the time, it would be nice to have, and I don't recall much more than that.
The decorative, changing some up to decorative.
The decorative versus, it was a Don Willard thing, sounded good at the time, they've lasted, they look good, but...
They do look good.
Sort of flip phones versus smartphones, and we changed, and we're moving forward, but...
Well, they do look good in the downtown area, I think they're, I, I, for one, think they're important in the downtown area. You know, I'm sorry that residents probably watching that we got the email from, but like I said, I, I was quite surprised that there was a light out there that's kind of pretty rural, that was decorative, and I could see, you know, not having all of those decorative lights considering the cost.
So if we, if we budget normally 55,000 round numbers, we've got for CMP a year, we're still, we're going to budget that money for the next eight years anyway. So that's 440,000, which is roughly the 436, so you've got eight years that you're going to be budgeting something you normally would budget for.
Right.
Right.
But, you know, I, I look at it...
But you're not getting six years' worth of, or whatever the number is, half of that back in savings on those last four years, which is money in the town coffers.
Unless you cut it down, unless you cut it down, then maybe, you know, maybe you take it down to three and a half years or something instead of six years, by cutting it down to just the downtown area.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to make sure that we bet out what the financial impact of the town is, and where and when it is, and how much it is.
Well, I think that, I think that point's accurate too, if you cut the decorative lights down to 75, you know, half of what's there, then the, the extra added length obviously gets cut in half, so then you're looking at, you know, four years or, or three and a half years instead of six years.
What, what data do we have in terms of feedback or preference from residents?
I don't have any, other than that.
Well, we do have Mr. O'Malley, yep.
One, one email.
No, 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 I have talked to the commercial people, I, I mean, I've talked to Sarah at Night of June, for example. I've talked to some of the business owners before who very much like their decorative lights out there, because it matches their, you know, the, the look of the downtown.
I've got a guy at Gurnee and Vinyl that's still waiting for years to be decorative, one to be fixed from a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
And the problem with the decorative ones is CMP apparently can't get parts, so how much more difficult is it going to be for us to get parts for those, or bulbs, or whatever? If they can't do them as a big organization or don't want to do them, how much of a problem is that going to be for us?
Well, because, well, obviously, I can't predict, you know, in 20 years, whether, whether there'll be parts available for them.
Well, they can't get them now, that's what I'm saying, so, and they're 20 years old.
But these are different ones, yeah, but these are different ones.
No, these are the decorative, the flat.
No, no, these are different lights, though, and that real time, when they, when Real Time was here, they said that they could put in either one, that can maintain either one, and so, I mean, they did not indicate any kind of difficulty with respect to the decorative ones whatsoever, and they made it clear that that was a choice that we had.
There, there certainly is, there are plenty of parts available currently for the lights, but nobody's going to know in 20 years whether or not there are parts or pieces available to, to keep the upgrade there.
Like any light.
Right, for anything, doesn't matter what it is, but I will say that, you know, in talking with Real Term, other communities where they've worked, like Wells, for instance, Kennebunk, where they have a, a village center, if you will, with, you know, commercial businesses, restaurants, the like. Dover Foxcroft was another one that they mentioned. They opted to put, you know, 40 or 50 lights, decorative lights, in their villages. If you look at other, obviously Camden downtown, and Rockland on Main Street, they have those. Bath has done the decorative lights as well in their downtown commercial district.
So a lot of towns have recognized that for aesthetic reasons, which are the same aesthetic reasons that, you know, I think we should.
So should we have a motion in another second so we can continue this conversation?
We can, yes, we, we can, go ahead.
I would move that we replace all of our 262 streetlights in Rockport with the basic Cobra head, if that's the, was it decorative, yeah, the basic Cobra heads, is that the?
That's the non-decorative.
The non-decorative.
Is there a second?
For the purposes of extending discussion, I will second, so that we can continue discussion. All right, when I look at the map of these, it appears that they line up with neighborhoods. The other parts of our town, I mean, we've got Rockville is covered, Clam Cove has decorative lights, Main Street, all the way, I mean, halfway to the snow bowl here is, got decorative lights on it, and I didn't even know, apparently, at the end of Main Street, there's a decorative light in it. And I'm, I'm looking at where some of these are, and I'm thinking, people are going by these at 50 miles an hour, and they're not anywhere near a home.
All right.
So, but then the challenge becomes, if we say, we want a few in the village, but we don't want a few, we don't want them in Rockville, we want to take them out of Clam Cove, we're going to get feedback six ways to Tuesday.
Well, I'm not so sure if it's residential-related or if it's commercial-related. I mean, obviously, the downtown area is where the commercial district is, that's what Camden has, has done, that's what Rockland has done, a lot of other towns that Bill mentioned, and so, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure it's, you know, it really is, the connection is residential so much as it's commercial.
What I'm saying is, it's in, it's in, it's currently in residential areas.
Right.
Simonton Corners, the work, all have decorative lights, so someone, somewhere along the way in history of Rockport, decided that neighborhoods should have decorative lights.
And one question is...
That's what happened.
Right, and one question, I guess, is do those neighborhoods, you know, care, and if they do, then we should know about that.
I, I think the biggest thing they care about, and I'll get back to that one person on Gurnee Street with Vinyl, they just care if it's working, they don't necessarily care if it's a, if it's a flashlight or if it's a 4,000 watt light, they just want it working.
I disagree with that.
Well...
I, I, well, I care, I, I mean, I care, and, and I think other...
I'm just saying, the people that talk to me, not, it's not necessarily what I care about, I care what the town cares about.
But I'm a human being, and I'm saying, I, I'm a human being, I'm a female, I like aesthetics, you know, and aesthetics mean something to me, and I bet you there's a whole, well, but, but to some...
I mean, I might care about aesthetics, it doesn't, you know.
Okay, okay, I don't care, you let me finish. My point is that there are a lot of folks out there, I think, like me, who do care. So I, I'm just saying that, you know, I don't want to leave it where it sounds like nobody cares, they just care if it's working. I, I don't think that's accurate.
I think in that one instant, that was, the driver was, whether it was working. I'm just concerned that we're going to make a call on where decorative lights are and where they aren't, and on what basis are we going to make that?
That's why we get paid the big bucks.
You know, if you look at it from more of a commercial perspective, and you do it in the downtown commercial area, and then if, like, for Simonton Corner, you do it in, like, sort of the center of Simonton Corner, you do it in the center of some of the other, you know, areas and villages, so to, so to speak, and neighborhoods, maybe that's an approach.
And then what defines center, and how far out do they go? That's the challenge.
Well, yes, but, I mean, that, as, as Doug said, that's why we, that's why we get elected, to make decisions like that. I mean, you know, so we make decisions, I don't think that we have to make decisions all the time, I don't think that this, I don't, I don't personally feel that that's a reason to say we take an all-or-nothing approach, and I'm not saying that's what you were suggesting.
Well, you know, I'm going to weigh in, I think it's worthwhile preserving the decorative fixtures in the, what I'm going to call the downtown commercial area. You know, this is an area where a lot of people come to at night, there's foot traffic there, just makes sense to have it. I can understand, you know, residential, or if you live out in Simonton Corner, you know, you may want to have one outside your house, but again, there aren't going to be a lot of people walking, you know, around the neighborhood to appreciate the light or to not appreciate the light. So, you know, if I was going to make, well, we have a motion on the table, but if I was going to make a motion, I would have a very well-defined downtown commercial area that would have decorative fixtures, and then the rest of the town would go back to the Cobra head-type fixture.
So that's a different thought than you just shared, which was to have a few in and around the neighborhoods?
I, I just threw that out there, if that was, you know, if that was more attractive to any of you guys as a possible option, but I, I would say that the, what he just, what Doug just expressed was the fir, was along the same lines of what I initially expressed. And, and which is acceptable to me.
Do we have this map to throw up on the screen for our at-home? Viewers, it's in, it was in the materials that...
Is it in the packet?
Yes. It's a smaller map, I think, but...
And of course, it's hard to tell because there's so many, understandably, so many Cs and Ds on top of each other, but... I guess you have to assume that where you see a lot of the Ds, you figure that everything underneath there, it's Ds, you know?
There's Ds in there.
Your Cs are primarily 1790 and Route 1.
Right, except for the intersections, yep.
Yeah, and those would be appropriate.
Yep, you're almost there. There you go. You gotta rotate that.
Up top, there's probably a...
Try right-click.
Isn't there a...
There you go.
Yeah, next one down, no, I'm sorry. Nope. View didn't work.
All right, there's usually a rotate there at the top.
There it is, down there, clockwise and counterclockwise.
No, clockwise.
I would do clockwise. I would do clockwise.
Well, I think if, I, I just did a quick count with the villages, um, that have the decorative streetlights. And it looks like those add up to about 50 to 60 lights that are outside of the, the village.
Okay.
That are away from, away from the downtown village area. And that's, that's just a rough count. So, basically, Route, Route 1, to the water, is probably 80 or 90 decorative lights. But you do have that concern, of course, is, you know, who decides? I mean, if the board says.
I will.
We, yeah.
If the board, if the board says, we want 100 decorative lights, or we want 75 decorative lights, who's going to go out and say, we want this one, we want this one, and we want this one? I mean, the number is fine. And, and keeping in mind that this, the, the process here is that, again, we'll have, once we, once the board determines these three items, then we'll have, uh, the investment grade audit will be done probably in two to three weeks. And then we'll have the real numbers. And then, uh, the lead time on the decorative lights is longer than it is for the Cobra heads. Because the Cobra heads is a, is a common light that gets put up everywhere. So, we're talking installation, um, March is what they're aiming for.
Our two counterparts, Camden and Rockland, that are also exploring this, in their outlying areas, or where are their decorative that they're keeping?
In the downtown areas.
So, there are.
Well, they're not, they already have LED lights in their downtowns.
So, there are other residential areas that have Cobra heads.
Yes. In Camden, there, they do emanate out from Route 1 commercial area, on some of the, the streets that have businesses, you know, that, that come out from Route 1, like Mechanic Street and, you know, that, that sort of stuff. But Rockland is strictly Main Street is where they have their decorative. And they're not part of this project because those are, those were already done for those two communities. They're already LED. And then the other communities that are in the, um, in the group that's purchasing, Thomaston, Union, Waldaburl. Waldaburl does not have any decorative streetlights. Thomaston obviously does in their downtown, but those were recently replaced as well because of their, um, Route 1 project, their downtown project. So, they do have decorative lights there as well.
You know, if I was doing this, um, what I could picture would be decorative lights, uh, from the, starting at the bridge, going into town, up Central Street to the library. And then I'd go up Union Street to the post office. Uh, I might go a couple up Russell Avenue to CMCA, the old CMCA building. And, you know, maybe up onto, a little bit onto Franklin Street, then a little bit on Main Street headed towards the town office. But that's the area I'm sort of talking about. I, I don't think we'd get into the neighborhoods back towards C Street, Maple Street, Elm Street. Uh, I don't think we'd carry them up Russell Avenue to my house.
Union? Remote Union?
Union, I'd go to the post office, and then probably go back to Cobra after that.
But then do you connect the streets that say, you know, like, Summer Street connects over?
Pascal?
Up Pascal, you know, on the other side of the bridge.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I wouldn't go down to Pascal.
Yeah, I don't think I'd go down Pascal.
And what about RES? Over to RES? I think I would take it over to RES.
Really?
This, this, this becomes the issue, right?
This is the issue.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's not that big of an issue, you know? You, you have different proposals, people vote on them, and that's that. I mean, it's no, it's not, you know, it's not that tough. You deal with a lot of tough issues.
Sure. All I'm looking for is a number tonight. And I know, obviously, that's the route.
So far, we've got 262.
Okay, if you, what's.
Overheads. To the starboard side of Route 1, looking north, how many are there?
I think that Bill has, has a good approach, and that is to count the ones that are not.
Not in the village.
You know, the, and, and deduct them, because that's really, they're easier to see, you know? Because there's so many piled on top of each other.
Right, out, out at West Rockport, you have six, basically, right? And down in, down in Rockville, I think that's 10 approximately there. There's about 10 down on, um, down the Clam Cove area. And then out by the Goose River Golf Club, Simonton's Corner, in that stretch, you've got, depends on where you draw the line, I guess, but.
Yeah, I definitely came up with.
Goose River goes, Goose River goes way out.
I definitely came up with, with 60 that are not.
Up to 62 already.
Yeah.
65. Now, if I got rid of 65, that would still be a lot out onto Beauchamp Point, be all the way down Union Street.
Well, we, we could just give a directive to change, as Doug has proposed, you know, from the bridge up to the post office, out to MCA, to the, towards the town office, the more commercial, if you will, portion of the downtown. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, but, yeah, but everything. And I think part of, and, and to get back on the, the gentleman's issue over there on the end of Beauchamp, uh, road, uh, street, whichever, his pole is tilted, which does provide more, you know, angled light. Because the light is, when the pole was in there, it was flat. Now the pole isn't, and it puts more light over his way.
Right.
You know, I get that.
So, what's exactly driving the fact that we have to make a decision on exactly the number tonight on these?
So that I can get the investment grade audit completed by Real Term Energy, which will tell us exactly how much money we're looking at.
Okay, so, let's just say, let's just say hypothetically, if we cut the number in half, I, I'm just throwing this out. If we cut the number in half and said, um, we're not going to do any more than those, whatever that comes to 75.
75, yeah.
75. And then for the staff to come back to us at the next meeting and, you know, and, and, and with, with a direction that the board gives them of, you know, the, the areas that have been mentioned tonight. And, um, and so we have the audit done with 75. And then if it turns out that by the time we get that, that more feedback, it turns out we only need 70. I mean, I'm sure we could adjust that, right? Adjust the audit by five lights or something?
Yeah, we're not.
One way or the other, or?
Yes, I mean, I think, trying to think the timeline to, to actually order lights, you know, is going to be December sometime for us to, as a, as a cooperative, you know, with Real Term Energy, actually ordering the lights would be December, I believe, to get them in time so that they can get installed by March, or in March.
The other thing that might be very helpful, Bill, is if they could get us a, um, a zoomed-in map centered on the commercial district.
Well, I have a street-by-street listing.
Well, it'd be nice if we could have a map.
Well, the street-by-street listing, if you shared that with the board, that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah.
Because it's, like I said, there's so much concentrated on top of each other, it's hard for us to see.
Well, that's why if we could zoom in and spread it out, we could say, okay, stop here, here, here.
I know, those kind of give you the.
Well, I could, I, I could support.
An eyeball on that.
A proposal that's halfway between 100 and 0 here on the number.
Then it does cut back your payback time.
It, it's going to cut it back by two years, two and a half years.
Right, so then you do realize that savings for the taxpayers.
You do realize that savings, and we pick a central point, pretty much, we pick a central point, somewhere within 500 feet of here, and we radiate outward.
If you look at.
And we stop at whatever that number, when we hit the max. If, if you look at what you have down Pascal, as described, even if you went beyond the bridge, down to the post office, now Russell, and up Main Street, I think you're going to have less than 49 lights if you just stayed on those particular roads. If that's the area, and only the area that we're concerned with keeping decorative. So, I mean, I think if we gave you a, a number of 49 or whatever, and then you go out those areas 49 in, in any of those four directions and.
Well, keep in mind that we won't have to know the exact locations of which ones we're going to have to have decorative until after the first of the year anyway, it's just a matter of.
Yeah, but we need to know the exact locations, I think, in order to know how many we really need.
Yes, no, that's what I was just going to say, is that you need a ballpark number anyway, so that you can, so if you do say 75, or you say 50, or you say 100, you know, whatever, then that's going to be based on what the, the IGA comes back at with, with real term numbers. And maybe, maybe you say 75, and then we look at the audit when it comes back, and we, then I have real figures in front of you too, for how long the payback is and that sort of thing. And if you want to reduce that then to 50, or you want to increase it to 100, then you could, certainly. I probably could get them to run those numbers as well, so that you'd see that. But that's up to the board. If you want to say 50 for a number, you certainly can, if you want to say 0, if you want to say 150.
I mean, we, we also need to just keep in mind that we have a, a great deal coming ahead of us with budgetary issues that are going to be straining us a fair amount. So, in the back of our minds.
Yes, but this won't be adding any cost to the budget.
No, but the payback.
But you're not saving, right.
The payback is going to be quicker with one than the other.
Yes, absolutely, I was just going to say that.
And that frees up that little bit of money to go offset something down the road.
Yes, exactly, sooner or later.
Yeah.
Right.
Could you read the motion back, Lynn?
Approved, 262.
Cobra heads, or whatever.
Straight lights with a basic Cobra heads. And that was the motion.
And there was a second?
Yes, it was a second, to continue the discussion.
So, do we want to call that motion?
I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay, all those favor in, all those in favor of the motion? Mark. All those opposed? Okay, in favor, Mark Kelly?
Correct.
Opposed? Jeff?
Yep.
Doug?
Opposed.
And keep in mind that, that primarily that was for conver, so, I mean, we'd already talked it to death anyway, but you got to have some sort of.
Well, that's what we did, was we, I mean, I seconded that in order to continue the discussion.
Yeah.
With the further discussion, I'd like to propose a new motion.
Okay.
I would like to propose a motion that, uh, we go ahead with the number 75 on the decorative and have the audit and the information presented to us that has a sensitivity analysis of every 25 plus or minus, okay? So, what's 25, what's 50, what's 75, what's 100? And see what the numbers look like. Once they plug it into a spreadsheet, Bill, they can.
Yeah.
Jam it out real quick.
Yeah, absolutely, and they've been, and they've been excellent to work with, so.
So, what we want is the 25 increments.
Yep.
Up to the 150.
And, and I would go as far as to ask the experts to help take a little weight off of our shoulders. You know what we've been talking about as far as areas for placement. I would ask them what their professional opinion is with regards to that.
I, I did ask them that question, not based on this conversation tonight, but prior to this meeting. And their, their response was, that's a political decision that the board has to make, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, strike that one off, that.
Do you, do we think we have a sense of what that motion is?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Are you in favor?
Yes, I had my hand up.
And you're not, right? You're not.
I'll vote against when asked.
Okay, okay, I, I just wanted to know if we needed to do a roll call, so apparently we do. Mark? Jeff?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Debra, yes.
I, we said that the difference on these, just so I remember in the content, was about $400 a fixture.
It's substantial, it's actually more than that, I believe.
That's, I think, for those listening, not here.
So, the decorative pendants, um, the total material is $1,204. And.
Per?
Per unit.
Per unit. And the regular Cobra head are 144.
1,204 for the decorative?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's a substantial number.
Yeah.
All right, and you do have to, you have to think down the road too, about maintenance and replacement. So, if, obviously, there's a 10-year warranty on the lights, on the decorative and the Cobra heads. But, you know, should a windstorm come along, obviously, that's not going to cover the, the replacement of the lights. We will have insurance on them, keep that in mind as well. But you still have to be thinking of maintenance down the road as well.
Okay.
But that gives me, that, that's good, I can get that information.
And, and then you will also give us, provide us with a copy of the street breakdown that you have.
I'll do the street breakdown, and I would try to do something with the map too there, so that.
Zoom in that Doug requested, if possible.
Yeah, yeah. So, then, the next, the next, uh, question would be the smart controls.
Sorry, I forgot.
And if you saw that, um, other form that I had sent out, I think Saturday, um, it shows the cost of the street, of the smart controls is around 30.
30,504.
Yeah.
Yeah, period, yeah, regardless of which.
Regardless of fixtures, it doesn't matter what they are.
Um, so, Bill, do you know if this is something that can be added later? I had the impression that they said, and I might be wrong, that when Real Time was here, they said you could add it later.
You can add it later, um.
More expensive to add it later.
Well, it's going to be more expensive when you add it later, because the installer's going to be installing as they go along.
Are, are either of our neighboring towns using smart controls?
Um, we, currently, Rockland uses smart controls on their LED lights on Main Street.
Where I was going with that is, I did speak with Bill the other day and asked him if there is a possibility that one smart control located in one of the three towns. So, no, they want to be able to make the money on selling three of them versus.
Well, and basically, because, so the smart controls are developed, so that each light has a component built into the light, or added on to the light, that's a.
And it goes to.
And then it goes to a central software, um, that.
And the unit cost for that?
Sides for the town. Well, there's $30,000 for the 200, and we'll just say 250.
The numbers are right here.
Yeah. 120 bucks a light.
And what the smart controls allow you to do, as you probably remember from the presentation before, is that you can, you can brighten the light, you can dim the light, you can turn it off. And it also will tell you when the light is out, and when the light has been fixed. So, that's more important to me, is that if, if, if we have a software program that's being monitored by a staff that says, that street light's out, then we can call the maintenance company, and then they can go and they can fix it.
And you also have a patrol that goes around every night that's been doing it for years.
Yes.
You know, that's the other savings.
Yeah, so.
Well, if we had.
We had a company that would respond for maintenance, right.
You know, then there's that.
The challenge here on all this is to appreciate how much money would be returned to us, and at what year, in the out-years of this thing. I mean, because really, if you think about the amount of money, we're talking 40 or 50,000 dollars a year, difference.
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot of money in our budget.
Yep.
And, um, on the smart controls, it says that it's, uh, the cost, and including one year of hosting. Do we have any idea how much the ongoing hosting cost is?
I, I didn't get that number, I was waiting to hear back. We're actually planning on having a meeting. We're actually planning on having a meeting with all of the towns with the representative of the smart controls, you know, in a couple of weeks. And again, I can always, I, I could have the audit with, with smart controls and without as well, just so you can see what the difference is. I mean, it's not a, it's not a huge number on the overall project, but it's still $30,000. I mean, it's not small either. So, I'm sure I could do that.
Well, I mean, there's no downside to doing that, right?
No.
So, shouldn't we just-
Get information, we need data.
Yeah, get information.
So, I certainly can do that, and that's, that's one of these three items that you can put off deciding upon until there is more information. But the decorative one and the color temperature was the two that really needed to have done. So, if you want to put that off until there's more information, you certainly can do that.
Okay.
I just want to take the time to thank Mr. O'Malley for writing to us and sending the pictures. Just to let you know, I read the letter and certainly took the, your concerns seriously.
Yeah, thank you. I meant to say that, Doug, that's great. And Bill, what I wanted to ask was, is there, is there something that we can do with respect to his light in terms of, I mean, I don't think that decorative versus, and I'm sure he, you know, he's not going to be the only resident that probably has a problem similar to this, but with the light shining into his house, is there a way that the light can be turned a different way? It probably doesn't matter if it's decorative or if it's Cobra, it's the positioning of the light high up versus lower, isn't it?
Yeah, you're not, there, the lights go in a standard location on the poles, no matter what they are. The issue, and I think Mark had brought that up, the pole is more of an issue, I think, there because it's leaning, it's not straight up.
Uh huh.
I mean, I certainly can forward that on to CMP, they control the poles, so-
And what, and I'm speaking to CMP, I mean, I, and I'll get back to this one rural resident that has been without a light for a year and a half, probably going on two years now. And what recourse do we have with CMP? I mean, I know you've talked about, you know, getting refunds and-
Right.
-money back, I mean, but how, how many lights have we been keeping track of monthly when they're called in or faxed in?
I don't, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we have, we have all the data that shows each individual light, when it was reported out, how many months it's been out.
Yep.
We have all of that data, and we do, I know that there's a resident that keeps reminding us on the reported fix-it that the light is out. I'd love to be able to say to them, "We know that it's out, we're trying to get it fixed. CMP is not responsive because we're in the process of purchasing the lights and replacing them."
Well, if I remember correctly, when, when Rick was here, he was saying that we couldn't withhold the money, or a portion of the money.
And that was incorrect, because we actually, we actually put our lawyer's, lawyer hats on, my husband and I, mostly my husband, and he contacted CMP, and he found out in writing that that is not correct. You can withhold the money. Only you have to have very specifics about the pole and et cetera, et cetera, right? Which I think we have. But the point is now, at this point, is that, you know, if you're only talking about a small number of lights, it's not going to do any good, it's not going to be any motivating factor, and especially when they know that we're going to be changing lights.
Well, I think on average, we've had at least 20 lights or more a month for the past year or so.
Yeah.
I don't know what the number is, I haven't counted them up.
Yeah, I mean, and, and we have, we haven't paid them yet, so, you know, hold a little back.
I think we have some questions on live stream. Bruce may be able to share with us.
I don't have the iPad up.
I don't have my computer.
Yeah, and, and by the way, Bob did forward, my husband forwarded all that information to Rick, it should be in his files where I can certainly forward to him.
If he has it again to forward, it would be easier for me to find it that way.
Yeah.
Let's see, log in.
Well, these three are near the end of the agenda.
Yes, we, I was just trying to get into it quicker, but everybody else is doing the same thing, so.
$1,150 fixture, just for the material.
That's why we're going to get more data, right?
So, I'm there, but how do you get to the commentary? $1,150. Better turn that down.
So, one of the comments is, "Can the board show us what the two types of new LED lamps look like?" So, that is in the material, if that can be brought up on the screen. And then the other question was, "How much difference in the light throw between the two different types of lights, of lamps? Will the Cobra lights light up the residential areas?" No thanks.
Okay, so here's the, this is the decorative light, the pendant, it's on its side.
Yeah.
So, if you go like this, you'll sort of-
But if you go to the next page, I think it's-
Go to the next page, and it has a good picture of the-
I think it's, yeah, the next page or two pages later.
Pendant on the post.
Oops, yeah, do it again. All right, there we go.
Let's go to the next, it shows a much better, it's either the next page or the one before.
Oh, there we go, there we go.
All right, and it would be just the arm and the light fixture itself, not the pole.
Correct. And then if you go a few pages down, you'll find the Cobra headlights as well, which is the basic.
It's a ways, Bruce.
I don't think you're going to see that there's going to be much difference. I think the-
In the spread of the light, right.
The downward shine is going to be the downward shine.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're both-
No, keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Both of the lights are dark sky compliant, so.
Keep going.
Keep going. Okay.
It's getting warm.
Can you scroll a little bit more, I think there's more.
Yeah, if you can scroll just a little bit more down on that page. Yeah, that's a, that's a good look.
Yeah.
So, those are, those are the differences.
What is going on up there?
Some performance or something.
Were there any other questions?
Those are the two that I see.
Those are from Kevin O'Malley, or the person who wrote us the letter.
Okay. Okay, anything else? All right, the next item on the agenda is act on and increase the motor vehicle agent fees.
So, the state legislature approved an increase in municipal agent fees for motor vehicle registrations that the clerk's office can process, an increase from $3 to $5 for renewals, and from $4 to $6 for new registrations. That was effective September 19th, so we're requesting that the board approve the increase in these fees, and this is the agent fee that stays with the town, does not go to the state.
Do you have a proposed start date?
I would just-
Not that I want to get my October registration in before-
It says effective-
So, I can save $2.
I would just have it effective September 19th, the day that it was, was approved, was effective for the state, not that we're going to go back and charge more people, you know.
My October one's going to cost me $2 more. Well, Linda or Bill, if you do online regist, well, that already costs you a little bit more, but does this fee apply if you do online registration?
No, because we don't get the agent fee if it's done online.
Right. So, it probably makes it about the same.
So, if we voted for this change, when would it become effective?
I think that's what you just said.
Immediately, yeah.
Just to be clean, let me, let me try this.
Sure.
"I move the board approve increasing the motor vehicle agent fees as allowed by state law effective November 1, 2019."
God bless you, my son.
Second. I mean, you could make it for tomorrow, but I'm just trying to keep it clean on the month.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, 4-0. I think you should abstain, Mark, just kidding. I have a question, totally off the wall here, but I noticed in what was sent out to, to the town that it talks about motorcycles, three-wheeled motorcycles?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a different type of vehicle.
Harley-Davidson modifications and the Polaris.
Huh, interesting.
There was never a definition of those in state law before.
Huh, okay.
Spiders, all that.
All right, the next item on the agenda is for discussion on action, and that is an update on the library project, and Doug is going to walk us through that.
All righty, I see I have an hour and a half, so we can get it to some depth there. Is there anything that, that's new, or has, has already been presented to the public or us before, we could start there, or? Um, not a lot. I mean, I'm going to breeze through this very quickly. Bruce, you want to pull it up?
I'm, you might say here, sir.
Okay, well, my thought here again was, it just, you know, we're five months into the project, and so I thought it might be helpful to hit the high points and just let people sort of know where we are. First line there pretty much says it all. The project is on schedule, it's on budget, and there haven't been any major glitches thus far, so if you want to, you can start playing with your smartphone now, because the rest of it is all pretty much just summary. There's a historical line here that talks about the $3 million building and a $500,000 Remember that the budget for the building intentionally didn't include any new furniture, shelving, or the library landscaping. We're going to try to approach those through different arrangements, and then also per our agreement with FI, if there's any money left in the soft cost at the end of the project, it'll be put towards the seven parking spaces on Lime Rock. And as of right now, we have $96,000 left over, well, let me just say, unallocated in soft cost, so the $500,000 is pretty well spent already. From a financial standpoint, we spent $600,000 of our $1.5 million bond, that's 40%. The next date that we have to meet is by May 23, 2020. We have to have spent 60% of the bond, which would be $900,000, and that's, that's not going to be a problem. Like I say, I don't want to just read this through here for you, people at home can read it. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, on the soft costs, the soft costs are $500,000, and of course, you know, we know that we're trying to really micromanage, and we're not going to apologize for that, for the soft costs. You said that, that they're pretty much spent, but with 96,000 or whatever unallocated, I mean, isn't it four fifths of them are, are, not spent necessarily, but-
Committed.
Committed, right?
Committed, right.
But one-fifth of them is still not committed.
96,000.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, well, that's pretty close to one-fifth, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Four thousand less.
Right.
And, yeah, so it's that, and that's not a surprise. I mean, you know, what's in there, of course, is the remainder of the architect's fees, the owner's rep fees, the, what else?
Well, there's testing, concrete testing, and-
Right, right, and a lot of those things that we knew all along, but, but there are no doubt going to be things that come up that we don't know about, that surprise us, and that will come out of that 96,000. Okay, but I just wanted to make sure that I, I just didn't, I wanted to clarify that they haven't been spent.
Committed.
Or committed, like committed. One-fifth of them has not been-
Not been committed, right, yes. But, as I noted earlier with our agreement with FI, is that if we get to the end of this, and that money's there, it all goes to FI to cover the parking.
Yeah, absolutely, we know, yep.
Yeah.
I mean, just so that you know, my, my, where my comments were going to is not that, I mean, of course, we know that anything that's left goes to FI. I just want to make sure that, as I know the rest of the board wants to make sure that we're not in a position that we're spending more than that 96, and then that's where it takes us over budget.
Yes.
And so, I want to be clear with the town that we're not expecting to be over budget, we're watching that 96,000.
Right, I think that's a very important take-home message, but, you know, also, we're fairly early in the construction project, and $96,000 to get us through the next year makes me very, very nervous.
Yeah, I think it's always made us nervous, and we felt that way from the beginning. I don't think that anything, though, has, has changed in the last few months from the time that we did the contract with FI. I mean, we've known, I mean, that's pretty much where we've been. We haven't had, like, a lot of surprises that have admitted that those bonds-
But that, that 96,000 is on the 500,000.
Correct.
And that's what we've got to remember, is it, I mean, that, we just have to watch the soft cost and that half million spend, and as we said, micromanage it, because-
And I can guarantee-
It goes pretty quick.
I can guarantee you from a management perspective, I'm, I'm well aware of that, and so I'm watching that very carefully, as is Megan Brack, at the finance director, watching that very, very carefully, and Mary Beth, the owner's rep too. You know, we're, we're very much on top of that, so.
And, and I don't want to get, I don't want to micromanage this, I, I just want to say, I, I had a, I had a conversation with a board member who said-
A which board?
This board, well, I'll just tell you, Denise had, had raced me some discussions that she had heard as a liaison to, you know, the library project about the boiler. Remember Ben was here, and he, we were talking about finishing off the lower level, and that it was always contemplated, my understanding of it was, it was contemplated that, you know, radiant heat tubes would be put in the flooring to prepare the lower level for heat, and that there will be, for example, with this new donor who's come on board, there will be heat in that lower level, but that he mentioned the purchase of a boiler. And, and I think that it, I also understood that the purchase of the boiler was something that was supposed to be for adding on down the road. In other words, we would have some kind of basic heat there, I don't know if it's forced air or whatever it is, heat that would be there, but that the actual radiant heat would be something that was added down the road. And, and I was getting the sense that, you know, there's some discussion about whether or not that boiler goes in now out of those soft costs, and my comment was, that would be a decision that this board has to make, but based on my understanding from what this board has said, anything that was like an optional thing like that is not going to, you know, and was seen as something to be added later, should still be seen as something to be added later, because again, you don't want to be paying for something out of those soft costs now when we've got a year left on this project and don't know where those are going to go.
Right.
You know, what we're going to find that we aren't aware of.
Yeah, to address that specifically, the design team tomorrow is meeting with the donors, and Denise and I will be there, and that's going to be one topic of discussion is the, is the boiler. If the donor is not willing to donate the boiler, then we won't have the boiler right away, it'll have to go in down the road, but the radiant heat tubing will be in the concrete.
Yeah, sure, yeah, as it always was.
That was, that was already in the original scope.
Correct.
That's what we have to, you know, we have a scope of work, and it was predefined, and if it's a waste it-
Right.
And there are heat pumps, there's part of the original scope that does provide heat to that, to that first floor.
That just made me a little nervous, and I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on that, on those soft costs.
Okay, and the construction, so what we've finished so far really is, you know, we've done the blasting, the excavation, the foundation, the structural steel is all now complete, as is the upper-level decking. In the next phases that'll take the next several months, on Wednesday, they're going to pour the upper-level concrete flooring, and then they'll start to do the wood framing and roof trusses, and then finally, the lower-level floor, so it'll be all closed in for the Couple of things here in miscellaneous that'll probably be interesting to the group, some of you already know. Parks and Beautification Committee are continuing to work with Keith Smith on the landscaping plans. The Parks and Beautification are also working on the land- Committee are looking at that. They're seeing if they can find donors that might help kind of upgrade the furniture and the shelving. So that's currently going on. On November 12th, the Library Building Committee, which is different than the Library Committee, is going to meet with the interior designer. She has picked out a selection of finishes and fixtures within the allowance that was in the contract price, and she's going to present those to the Building Committee to get their opinions on which one they think we ought to go with. I expect that the Library Building Committee will then make a recommendation to the Select Board for the final choice. Okay. You know about Zoning Board of Appeals. His attorney has suggested they will appeal to the Superior Court. The town is certainly preparing for that eventuality, but we just have to wait and see. That's it.
The last comment, I think, is important.
You want to read it for me?
Yeah, I will. The foundation fundraising's within 200,000 of its goal, so that means they're at 1.8.
A little bit closer than that even.
Okay, go ahead.
So, again, on schedule, on budget, and knock on wood, there have not been any major deviations.
Great.
Questions?
Nope, I don't think so. Okay. All right. The future meetings are, are listed in the agenda. There is no meeting the week of Thanksgiving, so there's only one meeting in November. I won't be here. Denise will be chairing the meeting, and then we'll all be back together December 9th. Select Board Liaison Reports. Mike, thanks, Joe.
Conservation Committee was just prior to this. They're, they're doing their, they're prioritizing, they're refocusing their work. And they went through a whole process tonight of, of, each of them had picked what the priorities were. They put them in their slots, and then they talked about them, and they boiled it down to certain things that they're going to be bringing forward. And they're going to be talking about a budget in the upcoming meeting now that they know what their priorities are for the upcoming year. And I've been encouraging them, and some of this reflects what might be a five-year plan for them. So it was, it was a good meeting. Unfortunately, it was only about an hour and 15 minutes. We could have gone another half an hour pretty easily. But I, there's good work being done. I mean, they're talking about working with Bill Nell Power and Bill to look for more grants. They're talking about getting all the committee chairs together and having a presentation by the manager and the chair as to what is expected of them. And then out, laying out of, which reminds me, I've got to get the budget schedule to Kim so that she can be prepared for-
I can take care of that if you want.
Yeah, good, if you would. But they're, they're thinking down the road. And the Parks and Beautification, I think is, Doug will probably touch on that. We haven't had one since the last one that I'm aware of.
Sorry, before we get off the Conservation Committee, it just reminded me, I thought we were supposed to have a presentation built by the state folks.
Yeah, the state, the state reps that were going to do the presentation weren't available for tonight, so.
And the other one is the pesticide. I asked if there was any of the people that were on the Conservation that might want to do that, and they, they're not keen on it. But there was one of the committee members, Megan Dwyer, if I got that pronounced correctly, wanted to be on the Comprehensive Plan Committee to work. She, as a representative of the, as a representative of the Conservation Committee on the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Okay. Was there anybody else who was interested, or just her?
No, it was just her.
Okay.
And that's about it. And I have been starting to look around for pesticide people. They're not working on it.
Did Chair Lipti get appointed to that?
I thought, I thought so, yeah.
Okay, I think so too, but I wasn't sure.
Doctor.
Yeah, she was interested in it.
Yeah, I think we, we're in there. Okay, next.
The Harbor Committee hasn't met since our last meeting. Rec Committee has not had a meeting since our last meeting. The Capital Improvement Committee, although having not met, and not specifically committee-related, but just continuation of the support of the communication of the bond information and package as it's coming to vote here very soon. Just to make sure everybody has all the information, it appears we do. We may have to do repeat postings and things on, on Facebook and just to keep it current and upfront and frequent and often. And then, lastly, the Pathways Committee has another meeting scheduled soon.
Doug?
Finance Committee met last week. It was their annual review of the town's portfolio. The folks from Bar Harbor Banking and Trust came up, and the bottom line is, the town is basically satisfied with the return and management on the, the funds that we have. So there probably won't be any big changes there. Parks and Beautification is, Mark said we hadn't met, but I think one thing I wanted to mention is, is that Hunani's pulling together a, a five-year budget plan for the parks. This is something that Megan has been asking committees to do, try to look out five years. And Hunani's done a great job with that, and that'll be presented at our, our next meeting. Planning Board met last week. Probably the, the big ticket item was Stuart Smith's hotel for downtown. This is very much the largest project that this town has seen quite a few years. So this was just the pre-application hearing, so there's no public comment. Pretty much, the Smiths just explained what their intentions were. The board asked some questions. The board seemed favorably disposed towards the idea. And so now, the steps will progress forward. They did want fancy streetlights, though.
How do you, do you mean fancy as in Cobra or decorative?
Yeah, good point.
It's the eye that beholder, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, good point.
Okay, the Mid Coast Solid Waste was supposed to have a meeting, but didn't happen because there wasn't a quorum. And we did have a governance, I chaired the governance committee on that group, and we did have a meeting, and we're slogging our way through the governance structure stuff. And Bill's already mentioned, for Doug and me, that the RES Redevelopment Committee, that that, you know, we were going to meet October 30th, but that's been postponed, and we're still looking for a date that works, which probably won't be till December, as he mentioned in his manager's report. That's it. So, the next thing on the agenda, if somebody wants to move to go into executive session.
I moves that we go into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter pursuant to one MRS Section 605, 6A.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Four zero. Okay, thank you. Thank you first.